Heavenly Father, we're thankful to be here this evening to do your work, Lord. We pray that you lead, guide, and direct each and every one of us. Lead us down the path that you want us to go. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Record call, please.
John Ketcher?
Here.
Troy Shropshire?
Here.
Dennis Sands?
Here.
Smithy Smith?
Here.
Randy Chickell?
Here.
Brianna Breckfield?
Here.
Chris Gantier?
Here.
Boris Seaver?
Yes, here. Sorry.
Yes, she's here.
I'm here.
Thank you. Item two, petitions from the audience I know of none. Item three, department head reports. Building inspector, no report. Emergency management. Mr. Jansen?
How are we tonight?
Excellent. How are you?
Good. Only thing I want to report was, we finally, last year, I don't remember when it was last year, but we went through and got the master drainage plans done and approved and everything. FEMA finally got around to closing that out, or in the process of it. There's a document that the city council has to approve it, which I think is on the agenda tonight. But anyway, once that's done, that's the only thing that's missing. We send that in, they owe us $42,187. So as soon as we get that done and sent in, they'll send us a check in about six weeks.
Very good. Takes a while for that process to work, doesn't it?
Pedro Gummer, they're quick.
They are quick. Thank you, John.
You bet.
Fire Department. Mr. BK.
Pretty much doing maintenance and stuff like that, but we're running into issues when getting parts. Called Allison Transmission today to get a part for engine one, and they're two to three weeks out. And our mechanic that works on most of our stuff says everything's like that. When something goes down, we're chasing parts, but we're also putting trucks out of service for a lengthy amount of time. So we're not hurting yet, but just to make you all aware, when a truck goes down instead of a quick turnaround, we're looking at weeks now, what used to take days just chasing parts. That's kind of what we've been doing. Y'all got any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Sir.
Our golf course, no report tonight. Library, recognize Ms. Carey, Rarrett.
Next week, summer reading registration begins, and you should all register. We have summer reading activities for all ages. You just have to be born, and then there are things for you to do. There are, like every year, two parts to summer reading. There's the reading and activity bingo sheet part that you can do at home. That enters you. Adults get entered into chances for prizes. Kids get books as prizes, as they do bingos on the sheet. And then there's the activity and event portion that happens at the library. Storytimes are Wednesdays at 10:30 in the morning, and then every other, all the other programs are Thursdays at 10:00 in the morning and 6:00 at night. It's the same program. They're all ages, so you should come. But the whole point of summer reading is to keep kids reading all summer long. Study after study has shown that kids who read all summer retain more of the information that they learned in the previous school year than the kids who don't. So they start the next school year better off than their counterparts who didn't read. So we want to keep everybody good to go, and there's less review for the school systems. Also, you have our April statistic sheet. The questions answered is an easily 563. I don't think that's accurate. I think that in this new setting, we're not keeping very good track, and I know that because I'm not keeping track of the things that I do. So I think it's throughout my whole staff. But pretty much, everything is as I expected, as we would expect it to be. And then starting in June is when we'll have programming attendance numbers for you guys to look at, too. Do you have any questions for me? Oh, there's Brick. Have you seen the brick on the building? It's like chest-high now. It's very exciting.
Brick's going up on the new building.
Mm-hmm.
Sure is.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Carey. Item F, parks, no report. Item G, police department, animal shelter. Chief?
We don't have anything to bring tonight unless you all have questions. We passed out our stats for animal shelter and police. Unless you all have any questions for us.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Recreation Center, Jessica Long.
I don't have much. We just released our summer deal yesterday, and so, starting after Memorial Day, Memorial Day, we will be offering some more evening classes, evening yoga. Kim's Extreme Chaos class that's so popular in the morning will now be offered twice during the week at night. And then we're also doing group lessons, private lessons. I will let you know, we didn't have enough lifeguards to open up the pool seven days a week, so we are trying to squeeze in a lifeguard training in the next two weeks. But the problem is finding all those teenagers who can come in from eight to four, three days in a row, all at the same time. So I don't know that that's going to happen. But what Jackie has done is she's utilizing the Mondays and Tuesdays that we do not have families swim for all those group and private lessons. So we're still earning money those days, still have revenue coming in, but it'll be Wednesday through Sunday. And then we also have Debbie Lyon, her memorial basketball tournament scheduled for August 5th, which is actually her birthday weekend, so it'll be a great time to have that. And then, I know I'm missing something. We've got childcare, so we've already started seeing more kids come in now that school's been out. So anyway, I think we're ready, as ready as we can be. So did you all have any?
How's the pickleball going?
Pickleball's good. Our regular pickleball players have actually entered a tournament, a senior tournament, so they're actually going to rent part of the gym to practice. So that's in June. And then we are adding, that's one thing we are adding on the, one thing we are adding on the summer schedule, is a Saturday morning from 9:00 to 11:00. So hopefully that'll allow some working people to come in and try it as well. And our regular guys are going to come in on Saturday and help teach. So it's picking up.
Very good. Thank you very much. Street Department, no report tonight. Item four, mayor's report, A, discussion possible action regarding a proclamation for National Safety Month. That is on page three of your packet. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion, Chitwood, second, Smith. I'll read the proclamation. National Safety Month, June 2022, proclamation. Whereas the rate of unintentional injuries and deaths in the United States remain at unacceptable levels, and whereas addressing muscular skeletal disorders, educating or on impairment, providing employers with tools to prevent injuries, mitigating falls, remain critical to preventing injuries and deaths in the United States. And whereas the cost of unintentional injuries to workers and their employees exceeds $1.158.4 billion each year and causes great suffering among individuals and their families. And whereas Prior Creek, Oklahoma residents and all workers deserve to live in communities that provide, that promote safe and healthy living, and whereas preventing unintentional injuries and deaths requires cooperation of all levels of government, employers, tribes, and the general public. And whereas the National Safety Council, founded in 1913, was congressionally chartered in 1953 to lead the nation in injury prevention through safety and health information, education, training, and advocacy in the United States. And whereas the Oklahoma Safety Council, founded in 1947, is a chapter of the National Safety Council and provides local resources to lead statewide effort to improve safety and health for the citizens and businesses of Oklahoma. And whereas the National Safety Council and the Oklahoma Safety Council work to promote policies, practices, and procedures leading to increased safety, protection, and health in business and industry, in schools, and colleges, on roads and highways, and in homes and communities. And whereas the National Safety Council and the Oklahoma Safety Council in 2022 will provide the nation with a month-long public education campaign, and whereas the summer season is a time of increased rates of unintentional injuries and deaths, it is appropriate time to focus attention on injury risks and prevention. Now therefore, I, Larry Lees, Mayor of Prior Creek, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim support of National Safety Month in June 2022, and strongly urge citizens and businesses of Prior Creek, Oklahoma, to observe National Safety Month by practicing safe and healthy behaviors in all aspects of their lives. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause a great seal of Prior Creek, Oklahoma, to be affixed at City Council, the 17th of May, 2022. This is the proclamation. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Call for vote.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Troy Shropshire?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Breckfield?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
All right. I would like to get out of order here, and, or not out of order, but out of the order of the agenda, and skip down to item C. And we have Mr. Bill Dinsmore here to talk about this with us. Item C, discussion possible action regarding approval of Prior Waste and Recycling LLC, adding a temporary monthly fuel surcharge for all sanitation customer services beginning June 1st, 2022, due to the rise, excuse me, due to the rising costs of diesel fuel. Bullet point one, residential services, 8% fuel surcharge, which is an approximately $1.22 per month, per customer. Bullet point two, commercial hand collection and 8% fuel surcharge. Bullet point number three, commercial and residential dumpsters. He has asked for a 6% fuel charge, but I would like to amend that to an 8% fuel surcharge. This action will be administered via normal channels with Municipal Utility Board as a billing agent. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Shropshire, second, Chitwood. Bill, would you come? Now, the request to change the 6%, or the amendment to change the 6% to 8% on the commercial and residential dumpsters, is just that Municipal Utility Board, the billing agent, doesn't have that ability to make that differentiation. So making that 8% as well. So Bill contacted me via phone and via letter, and the letter is in the packet. I'm sure you've probably seen it. Bill, give some explanation.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and unfortunately, I don't like doing this. And hopefully, it's just temporary. And, you know, we've, when fuel started approaching $4 a gallon, we started worrying. Basically, when we figure rates, we use $3.50 as a, we never dreamed it'd go past 3.50, and of course, we've experienced that. We were kind of put in a position that with Prior's rates, we also subsidize the transfer station. The transfer station doesn't generate enough people coming in to accommodate and pay for equipment and labor and so forth. So part of, part of the fuel cost, we have kind of skyrocketed a little bit quicker and higher than we anticipated. One thing that I always emphasize to people, that basically, we are a trucking company or a transportation company. It just happens to be refuges of the commodity. You know, we collect it at the curb twice a week for residential, then we train, we take that to the transfer station, load that into 18-wheelers, and then we transport to Tulsa. So we have a lot of fuel expense by what we do. But that controls the cost of operation, because trash trucks are not really designed to make a two-and-a-half-hour trip back and forth to Tulsa. And we can do a larger volume at a lower price by using the 18-wheelers. But anyway, we've, all of our contracts, we've had to request fuel, a temporary fuel surcharge. We did not want to jeopardize or make, threaten any contract by any choice. We have a good contract, it's worked. The contract we have in place has been there since 1989, a long time, to have a contract of any type. But anyway, we've, we have not dealt with any of the contracts, and like I said, it's temporary. Once that rate goes down, that fuel goes down, hopefully around 3.75, we can eliminate all fuel surcharge. We, unfortunately, everything that we do has a fuel surcharge on that. I don't care if it's tires or what it is, there's fuel surcharges. Anyway, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. The city of Prior's been awful, awful good to prior waste and recycling, and we hope we've been able to return that same service by, again, having a transfer station. As I told Towne O'Slana last week, I said, you know, we, there's a, during the cleanup, we had, what?
565.
565 vehicles come to that transfer station in 14 hours, over 23 semi-loads of trash. So without that, I don't really have any idea where people would go through trash. But anyway, but I'll shut up at this point and answer questions.
Any questions at all? Just for the, for the citizens' information, approximately, how many truckloads do you haul in a normal day to Tulsa? Because it's going to be astronomical. I just want everybody to know how many you make.
We make about, we have seven semi-trucks, and those seven semi-trucks will probably average about a trip and a half to two trips a day.
That's a lot of trash.
To Tulsa hauling trash, and that's just Mays County, so.
And there's a lot of idle time, too, when they have to sit there in line to get, to get dumped and stuff. So you don't, you don't just get over there, turn around, and come back. There's, there's time that you have to have your truck running.
Yeah, it's, it's a real methodical process. I mean, by, to load the equipment quickly, transport it safely, then when we get to the disposal site, there's only three disposal sites around, and they're all in Tulsa, unfortunately. So, yeah, it's, you're correct, sir. It is, it's a working process. And, you know, we, we, our objective is to move it quickly. We don't like it to sit around and the transfer station become a health hazard, and also, I'm monitored by DEQ. DEQ comes by, and they don't tell us, they just pop in and do an assessment of the operation and the cleanliness of it. And I'm proud to say, and this is something that the US counselors and the mayor, we've never had a violation, never. And that's very unusual. I've, I keep every evaluation that we have, and I can show in writing that we've never been written up for, by DEQ. When I took over the refuse, we had Dog Pound Road, which was a major DEQ violation, and it was being threatened by that time, the city of Prior's being threatened by that location because it was unsightly, it was unclean, had a bad smell. We went there and cleaned that all up, and city was able to take control of that location, so.
Very good.
Any questions, Mike?
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you for your service. I might say that, sitting in the mayor's chair, are there ever complaints that come about trash service? Well, there are. There are. And you know what I do? I just, I send them to Bill, and Bill, and Bill pounces on them, and, and gives, and gives me a report back. And so, all of, all of those things have been able to be resolved, and so I appreciate your, your good customer service to our citizens in that regard, Bill.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I'd like to add this, if you call the transfer station, you'll, you get Matt. Matt's been with me for a long time. Of course, my son, he's been with me, too, for a long time.
Yeah, both of his wives, huh? Any other discussion?
Longer.
On the motion? Call for vote?
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Breckfield?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, I'd like to divert over to the addendum now, please. And we'll cover all three of these addendum items in a row. First one is discussion possible action regarding appointment of Terry Lamar to Recreation Board Seat Number One, term ending 8/31/24. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Chitwood, second, Gantier. Terry has been interviewed, and he has been, I don't know, Terry, if we call that vetted, but he's, he's been interviewed and by the rec board, and the rec board sends that recommendation to us. And Terry is here tonight. If you would like to hear from him? I think we all know him. Yep. I think we do. I think we do all know him. So any discussion? I think Terry will serve very well on the rec board. Terry, appreciate your willingness to say yes to that. Call for vote.
Sands?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Breckfield?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes. Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Terry. Item two, discussion possible action regarding the contract between Five Tool Training and the Prior Creek Recreation Center.
Motion.
Motion, Chitwood?
Second.
Second, Smith. This information is in your packet behind the, behind the addendum, or amendment, you have the addendum, the Five Tool contract. Any questions, any discussion about that? Jessica, would you mind to come to the mic? Tell us about Five Tool.
So Five Tool is a program, it's an individual that comes in, and he does lessons with these junior high and high school students for basketball. So they're doing drills, and then they work on some speed work, and then end up playing basketball the last 20 minutes. And it's also a really neat program because he's mentoring them as well, praying with them at the end of every session, and so it's just, he's kind of trying to give back a little bit. And so his fee is $50 a session, and we get 20% of that for each one. So they are paying weekly. I know the contract says it's due, I think, monthly, or at the end of...
End of the month is what it says.
End of the month, but they are paying weekly, which is great, too. So they are adding a day onto the summer schedule, or a different time. They're now going to be doing, possibly be adding a 2 o'clock, but we kind of left that open, so, because that'll vary depending on the time of year. But it's just a great program, and it operates, this contract is very similar, almost identical to our swim team contract, and Miss Jimmy's, and it's the same thing. We just like to get something in writing, agreeing on times and fees and all of that.
Questions? Discussion? Hearing none? Call for vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Breckfield?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, discussion possible action regarding accepting bid from Brady Industries in the amount of $3,521.62 for a commercial floor scrubber for the Prior Creek Recreation Center and Recreation Capital Outlay Equipment Account, 848455410. Other bids received, Global Industries in the amount of $4,566.2 and floorscrubbers.com in the amount of $5,679.38. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Chitwood, second, Smith. You have that information, you have the description in the packet, and apologize just getting that to you yesterday. Any discussions at all? Hearing none? Call for vote.
Chitwood?
Yes.
Breckfield?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sands? But there was also a point brought out, and I would argue, that honeybees are not the only species of pollinator bees. And there are other pollinators like birds, bats, butterflies, moths, flies, beetles, wasps, and small mammals that contribute to our food cycle that are being affected by chemical mosquito spraying. Most communities, as I showed last year, only spray for mosquitoes when the need arises and/or only target spraying neighborhoods with creeks and standing water. Also, many municipalities across the nation are doing their part in mosquito prevention and reduction by not spraying but taking certain measures. The City of Pryor needs to step up to eradicate standing stagnant water and drainage issues in our ditches and parks that has been a longstanding and ongoing problem. Also, timely abating properties that breed mosquitoes, like the recent abatement of the stagnant swimming pool that created mosquitoes affecting the neighborhood for years that finally got abated. You know, there's issues like that all over the city, not like, you know, swimming pools, but other mosquito breeding areas. Like, let's get tough on brush piles and debris on properties, take an active stance in educating the public on how they can control mosquitoes on their property. So, councilpeople, I am calling on you as the city to step up to the plate to practice mosquito prevention eradication in more safe ways by targeting as needed and educating the citizens through your Facebook page, website, and the paper. If you choose to continue mosquito spraying as is, I ask that you publicize the dates of the anticipated spraying with the phone number of professional pest control so citizens who do not want their property sprayed can call and request a no spray, which that is what I do. In this, I want to challenge you to create an atmosphere of unity and compromise where both sides of the issue can come together and come up with solutions and practices that are beneficial for all of us. How many I asked you all in the email that I sent you a few weeks ago to do some of your own research? How many of y'all did that? No?
I had in the past.
I have.
Okay. For those that did, I appreciate that. And here's some systematically ways to eliminate breeding sites where known populations of mosquitoes originate. Ditch and clean stagnant streams to ensure a continuous flow of water. You can drive down by the park. You can drive in other areas of the city and you'll see stagnant standing water that stays there, not just after rain. Drain or fill backwater pools and swamps where stagnant water accumulates. Remove vegetation and debris from along the shores of ponds and lakes to discourage mosquito breeding. Such bodies of water should have a steep, clean shoreline with as little vegetation as possible. The most effective control of mosquitoes around the home is to prevent them from breeding. This can be done by eliminating or altering existing breeding sites as follows. Dispose of discarded or unused tin cans, old tires, tarps, boat covers, or any other artificial containers. Make weekly inspections of the water in flower pots and plant containers. Change the water in bur baths and wading pools weekly. Drain wading pools when not in use. Start garden and lily ponds with top-feeding minnows. Keep rain gutters unclogged and flat roofs dry. Eliminate stagnant pools, puddles, ditches, or swampy places around the home of property. Keep margins of small ponds clear vegetation. Chlorinate and filter swimming pools and outdoor hot tubs. Remove all tree stumps that may hold water. We only have one code enforcement officer, one, for ten thousand people. And I would like to suggest that sometime in the near future, we think about hiring at least one more. Because you can eradicate a lot of your mosquitoes in this town if you would take active measures to do so. You can drive, just take a drive through town and it won't take you long to see many mosquito breeding areas. The use of chemicals is at best a temporary expedient that should be limited to only those situations which no other alternatives exist. Larvicide is the most efficient and effective and should be the backbone of any mosquito treatment program. By comparison, adulticide, which was the target in that two thousand sixteen honeybee study, is less efficient and as such should be used strictly for supplemental or emergency purposes. The detection of active transmission of mosquito-borne disease is an example of such an emergency. Considerations in choosing specific chemical controls and application methods include the following. Non-target impacts to people and the environment. Effectiveness against target species which create resistance. Potential contamination of food, plants, and recreation areas. Cost. Availability and quantities needed. Need for re-treatment. Chemical stability. Ease of preparation and application. Thermal fogs, which is used now, can provide rapid but temporary control of adult mosquitoes with little residual effect, which is why we have to keep spraying. Because we're concentrating on the adult mosquitoes instead of the larva or the mosquitoes. And this is just an example of how y'all can talk about different solutions and come up with, you know, better ways of doing this. And more, and one of these ways is a more effective method of ground, is ground application and the use of larvicide, which is called ultra-low volume, ULV, cold aerosol equipment. I didn't go into the research on exactly what that is. Mike may know what that is and maybe he can, he can enlighten you on that. Or maybe it's something that y'all can talk about. So, I want to leave you with this. I've seen and heard a lot of, and read a lot of chatter about concerns of toxic waste concerning Project Ocean could possibly bring us. But we have no concern about how spraying chemicals into our air to temporarily kill mosquitoes, which for decades over time has affected our environment and our pollinator population. I can't speak to the human population, but from my own personal research and my own personal observations, there has been a decline in pollinators in the last, since I've been back. I've been amazed, I've been back seven years, that the decline is just amazing. And I want to reiterate, when I have asked that no spray on my property, I have seen pollinators come back. So, I just want to encourage you all to think outside the box and talk about it and think about it. Otherwise, I'll be here next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you.
Let's get it.
Well, I'm Mike Kennedy. I've been operating professional pest control here in Pryor for forty-two years. And professional pest control has been providing citywide mosquito treatments for the City of Pryor for over thirty years. And our goal has been to provide safe, effective use of EPA and Oklahoma Department of Agriculture Registered and Approved Chemicals and Application Methods, used in compliance with strict label directions to protect the citizens of Pryor from mosquito bites which can transmit the Zika West Nile virus and other diseases. And I just wanted to let you guys kind of look through this real quick. This list, you might have to share.
That's all right.
This list, several of the mosquitoes we have in Pryor, and the diseases they carry. And there are any, Zika virus, West Nile virus, other diseases, dog heartworms, there's many different diseases. Our goal has been to protect the citizens of Pryor. And I feel like, I don't want to be selfish, but I think it's a lot more important to protect a small child or an elderly person who could be at greater risk at these diseases versus a butterfly. I'm sorry. I think a human life is worth a lot more. We don't have a perfect town, a perfect environment, but we have to control these mosquitoes, try to limit these diseases from being transmitted. And we have never been contacted by the City of Pryor Administration about any complaints from citizens of killing honeybees, birds, or any types of animals. And I did call last week to verify that with the city offices and ask them if last year, if they ever had any complaints from any of the citizens where large killing of birds, bees, or anything like that had been reported. They have received none. In fact, twenty-nine years prior to that doing this, we've never received a single complaint about killing anything except the mosquitoes. And we've actually had many thanks from the citizens of Pryor over the years for controlling the mosquitoes. And I have a little sampling of those citizens from every ward in the City of Pryor. Sign that. Say they were in favor of us providing mosquito spraying. You got it?
Thank you. Thank you.
We've gotten a lot of thanks from people over the years. Now, and I didn't want to refer to anything Nina said. I'm not asking her any questions. And I'm not debating her with anything, but I do want to point something out. I have the same study from Purdue University that she was reading a lot of that material from just then. And she said thermal foggers is what we use now. No, we don't use a thermal fogger. Thermal foggers can provide rapid temporary control of adult mosquitoes, of adult mosquitoes with little residual effect. Thermal foggers break, thermal fogger, thermal fog generators, excuse me, break up the insecticide by means of hot gases or superheated steam to produce a fog or smoke. This method is effective only when there is little or no wind present. A more effective method of ground application is the use of ULV, ultra-low volume cold aerosol equipment. That's the type of spray unit we have. These machines produce very tiny droplets of concentrated insecticide, which results in a greater area coverage with less dosage. This type of application is designed to kill active adult mosquitoes with little or no residual. Like thermal fog generator, the cold aerosol machine should be used during the time of the day the adult mosquitoes are most active, from twilight until about midnight. We actually do the fogging. We start at around eleven, twelve o'clock at night and go up till six o'clock in the That's from the entomologist department of Purdue University. Now, we apply the chemical called Permax UL four dash four. UL stands for low, ultra-low volume. ULV stands for ultra-low volume. We apply the chemical through a ULV cold aerosol truck mounted unit. This type of application is designed to kill active adult mosquitoes with little or no residual control. And active mosquitoes are usually active between eleven, twelve PM till about six AM. Honeybees are not active at that time. They're in the hives. The active ingredient in Permax UL four dash four is permethrin. Permethrin-based chemicals can be purchased by the public from Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot, and other home improvement or farm and ranch type stores and are widely used and misused by the public over application. If the label says three ounces, let's try six. Everybody's done it. Permethrin is the active ingredient in topical pet drops to kill ticks and fleas called Front Lines, nine point eight percent permethrin. Permethrin is also the active ingredient used in scabomite, a topical cream used on the human body for control of scabies, five percent permethrin. Permethrin is also used as a shampoo, excuse me, for lice control. It's called Nyx Ultra Lice Removal Shampoo. Permethrin, point two-five percent permethrin. And that's America's number one brand recommended by healthcare professionals. The permethrin, Permax, the permethrin in Permax four dash four ULV that we use is four percent. Lot less than some of these that are actually recommended by healthcare professionals to be placed on the human body. Now, there's been talk that nobody around here uses mosquito fogging methods anymore, but I can assure you, Oklahoma City does. In fact, Oklahoma City puts out a list from the Oklahoma Department of Agriculture urging their homeowners to use chemicals off this list. And one of the chemicals on this list is Permax UL four dash four.
Thank you, sir.
Now, it was referred to earlier as the two thousand sixteen LSU study that was said to have been controlled in a laboratory. I have that study right here. And if you want to look through it, you'll see that it was done outside. It was done outside in rural areas. This study was conducted by Louisiana State University. The first statement is LSU Ag Center researchers in the Department of Entomology found mosquito control done properly has minimal effects on the health of honeybees. Second page is mosquito control products are used extremely small doses that target mosquitoes and the chemicals break down within hours. Mosquitoes are one hundred times more susceptible to these pesticides than bees. These pesticide concentrations used out in the field are not high enough to kill honeybees. That again is from Louisiana State University study, two thousand sixteen. I appreciate everything that's cautioned in this. And again, as I said, we followed the label directions very closely when applying this chemical. We have to determine wind speeds at times. And it's been reported that you can call me and say, hey, don't spray my yard. You have to understand, when we drive through a neighborhood, like say down Locke Street off of Ninth, and the wind's blowing, ideally, good ten mile an hour wind helps us, it carries that chemical. That chemical does not just sink immediately. It's such a fine particle that it carries. We've had a Pryor citizen ask us not to spray her yard. If we go down Locke Street and this yard is on the corner of Veda and Ninth Street, if we go down Locke Street, we don't have much control of ten mile an hour wind that's headed east going down Locke Street, carrying over. I can assure you, that yard has received several treatments before, even though we did not drive by that yard with that machine running. Because we have no idea how far. I've gone down Whittaker Street before and fogged Taylor and Whittaker. I've gone down Whittaker Street before and fogged Taylor and Whittaker, and then turned the corner on May Street and looked down at the streetlight and you could see my fog drifting. That's what we want, we want that chemical to drift. We will pull up to areas that are holding water and depending on the direction of the wind, we will sometimes sit there for five minutes and let that thing run. A good example is the big ditch out at the baseball field, and right behind the old mission. We'll pull in there, if we've got a southern or northern wind, we'll park on First Street there, right by the softball parks on top of that bridge there. And if the wind's going south, we'll just sit there and let that thing run and let it carry it down all the way to the back of the baseball fields. Or if it's coming out of the south headed north, we'll sit there on that road and let that chemical generate that fog and let it move down that big wide ditch all the way over to Highway twenty. Again, I don't, I don't have any problem with the city of prior calling me and saying, hey, we've got this customer, this citizen doesn't want you to spray your yard. I certainly don't expect the city to give my number out to anybody, and I don't really want my number given out by anybody that's not a member of my company for people to call me. I don't mind people calling me, but I don't want my phone lines or my answering machine tied up during busy seasons when I'm expecting calls from my regular customers. However, if the city wants to know when we do it, we will try to let you know. It's sometimes depending on if nine o'clock at night there's a thirty mile an hour wind, we're sitting down at the shop ready to go, and that wind dies down to an acceptable speed, we'll go out. Sometimes we've been ready to go out, scheduled to go out, and it'll start raining, and we have to stop at that point. So knowing the specific dates of when we're going to be able to do this may be hard to achieve, but I would encourage the city of prior to take all these phone calls, and if they want to make a list, I'll apply once every couple of days and pick that list up.
Could we make that, could we make it easier by maybe having some sort of a sign or a flag or something that if a person didn't want that to be in their yard, instead of you having to look down this list constantly and find out who's on the list, if you had some sort of a device in the yard that they could actually, you could actually see it and say, okay, this is a flag that basically says that they don't want it sprayed, it'd be a heck of a lot easier than trying to navigate a list, wouldn't it?
Well, it would be. At nighttime, it's kind of difficult to see. I don't know who's responsible for that cost of the flags, but...
Well, I'm just saying if you had some sort of something that you could put out there to say...
Well, they could throw a rock at me or shoot a shotgun, I don't care, up in the air.
But that would be easier.
That'd give me a pretty good indication I'd swing by. But what I'm getting at, though, is even though there may be people saying, I don't want my yard sprayed, this is not spraying their yard. There is no residual going on their yard. This chemical holds in the air and kills adult mosquitoes in the air with little or no residual effect at all. And it's difficult to know exactly, just like I said, went down Whittaker Street, turned north on Maze, and the streetlight down there, you could see the fog under the streetlight. So it's kind of difficult to control.
Sure.
But by design, that's what this ULV fogger does, and that's by design what we want to achieve, is a fog that stays in the air and drifts for as far as we can probably get it, to really be effective in controlling these mosquitoes.
So about how many citizens would you say are concerned about their yard not being sprayed?
One.
Okay.
Two.
Three.
So you'd say maybe...
Four, I know at least four.
Well, that's fine, it's not been reported to me.
But Nina, you said that you haven't heard reports of bird kills, and I have a lawn care business, and I have seen times where I've seen massive, what I would consider large scale, bird dying in the city, but my non-city properties didn't have it at the same time.
Well, did they do a test on those birds to determine what killed them?
No, I'm just saying what I've observed, I've seen it. So to say it's not possible, I don't know. I'm just saying, I prefer, and I know there's sometimes you can't help but spray, but if we cut the grass, if you turn the tires over and get the water out of them, if you reduce it, every time that you don't spray is a better, that you don't have to spray is a better thing for the environment. Because, like I said, I have seen dead birds, yeah, I've seen it myself, and I do know these chemicals do have problems, and it's just like when you spray Roundup. You spray it, it dries, it goes away. You spray this stuff, it lands in water, it doesn't break down as quickly as if it does other ways. So I'm not saying I'm against spraying, but I agree it should be done as infrequently as possible. Yes, if we have a virus breakout and we've got things like that, sometimes it can't be helped.
Well, let me ask you something. What justifies frequency? Because the city would call us constantly and say, hey, Mike, we've got reports of them in this area, we've got reports of them in this area. So we're going all the time. But let me add something else to that. You've been in the lawn care business, you apply pesticides.
Not pesticides.
Well, herbicides.
Very, very infrequently.
Yes, but you apply herbicides, correct? And they can be dangerous to insects and birds and bees and all that too, right? According to the label. You've read the label, I'm sure. You understand how it can affect the environment. You've got to realize, there are probably twenty to twenty-five different pest control companies that come through this town almost every day. I see them all up and down Main Street and sixty-nine highway that I don't even, I've never even heard of them before. There are several companies, organ and terminics, that offer, and I do too, a specific mosquito treatment for your yard, using chemicals that have residuals that are sixty to seventy times stronger than this permethrin, which means they last sixty or seventy days instead of just minutes or hours. I saw crop duster south of prior, south of the airport the other day, crop dusting somewhere. Farmers continually use chemicals on their fields, crops, really where bees are more abundant out in the wild, out along fence lines and woods, a lot more than they are in the city of prior. So this attack on the fogging, I don't understand why we don't have a more comprehensive attack, because there are lots and lots of pesticides. You go to Walmart right now, there's things more dangerous than the permethrin I'm using, you can buy it off the shelf at Walmart. And people like to misuse that chemical. They think a couple ounces per gallon will work, four ounces a gallon will work better. They really have not achieved anything greater than killing their insects, but they've actually created a hazard by using too much of it, concentrating too much of it in one area. People are continually spraying their shrubs, their lawns, there is hundreds and hundreds of more pesticides being applied on a daily basis than the minute percentage that we're putting out with the fogger. The fogger, sir, I promise you, is not the only thing killing honeybees or anything else. And I'm not going to get smart with you, but I'm going to tell you this. You can look at the grill of any semi truck you want to, and you can pick out a butterfly collection out of that grill, but we can't ban trucks going, cars going up and down the road. I hit them with my windshield all the time. I hit bees. There's lots and lots of other things killing honeybees, a lot more volatile than the chemical I'm using. So even though the finger's been pointed at me as the only thing that's causing the decline of honeybees or butterflies, I am just a very, very tiny part of it, actually. So I don't mean to be too defensive towards you, I appreciate your comments, but I think there needs to be a greater overall picture to look at this pesticide use done by, I sprayed around three houses this afternoon. I banned out around those houses twenty, thirty feet. I sprayed all the shrubs at the customers' request, and I put down a chemical, again, sixty, seventy times stronger than this permethrin. We've actually used permethrin as a general purpose pesticide around homes before, back in probably fifteen to twenty years ago. They took Durisban off the market. There were many types of Durisban, the active ingredient's chlorpyrifos. EPA banned it determining it caused cancer in small children where they were spraying lawns, playgrounds, and things like that. If that was the case, then I'm all for it. It was a great insecticide, had about a ninety to hundred day residual. They replaced it with permethrin. We saw reinfestations a week, week and a half after applying permethrin. And then we quit using it, I promise you. We had to, we had to find something else because it was not carrying any residual. It did a pretty good job of knocking insects down, knocking the population down, but it did nothing to control residually the insect populations. But at that time, we were kind of faced with what do we use after they took Durisban off the market? So I can only state that if a bird or a group of birds have died, then I think a test should be done on those birds to determine if it was Permax four dash four ULV that actually did it. And again, like I said, over the past thirty years, we even used more volatile chemicals twenty-some years ago than this permethrin, and we still never had any birds, bees, butterflies dying, large quantities, nothing reported. So I had to stand, and I tend, most pest control operators tend not to use the word "safe." I use the word "stable." When people ask me, is this safe? I said, well, it's stable and we apply according to label directions. I try not to use that word "safe." I've slipped a couple of times and used it, but there really is no safe chemical. Again, we don't live in a perfect world here, and yeah, we do have water, but I commend the city of prior, they're trying every day to do something with the drainages in this town, just like Crisker Nuts on North Elliot, big project there. Hopefully that's going to work. We can't control the rain. I drove in from my house, went down Elliot Street, turned right by the First Baptist Church, there's a big puddle there. I went down to the next stop sign by the First Baptist Church, there's another puddle. We can't help that, that's just rainwater that is collected. I don't know what you could do to prevent that, but it's been said tonight that, yeah, we should issue warnings, empty your cans in the backyard, your spare tires, but I promise you guys, I go around houses every day, seven, eight, nine houses a day, and I walk in those backyards and I see the little radio flyer wagon with the wheels buried in the ground, but it's still holding water. I see tires stacked up. I see the little maple trees growing up in the guttering around people's homes. We've tried for years, and we used to make announcements in the paper, the Daily Times and the paper, about, hey, the city's going to begin mosquito fogging. We urge you to empty out all your cans, tires around your house, and you just can't get to people. You can't make people understand that. I'll be spraying a house for spiders around the outside, and they'll say, hey, does that work on mosquitoes? And I said, yeah. And they said, would you spray my backyard too? And I go back in the backyard, and there's all kinds of things holding water. So we've made an attempt before to educate the people and re-educate them, and try to educate them again with these articles in the paper. At times, I paid for those articles. But you just can't make people do something they don't really want to do or they care about. There's some areas here that just appears they don't care if they have mosquitoes or not. They may never go outside, they may live inside their house twenty-three and a half hours a day. But the challenge is, do we do less? Do we, I mean, but the fact of it is, of this challenge that we're getting, is that we've never had any problems. All the problems that were, the causes and effects have, it's never been reported. And you said, yeah, there's two or three people that don't want it. They've not indicated to me they don't want it, they haven't called me, and they haven't called the city, because I called Darla at the city offices today, and I said, Darla, I asked you that question last week if you'd ever had anybody reporting that you had a death of birds or butterflies. She said, no, we never did. So I thought, well, I better look at the other side of that coin, so I called her today, and I said, have you had anybody calling lately about mosquitoes, asking, are we going to do it? I went up on four, three oh four North Hogan, yesterday evening at six o'clock, and to do a termite inspection on the house, lady lives across the street, came over and unlocked for me, it was her mother, she's selling it, and she walked by my truck and said, oh, have you got anything for mosquitoes? I can't even get out in my backyard right now. And I sprayed a house at one-thirty this afternoon, and I was spraying boxwood, big boxwood bushes, all kinds of shrubbery around the house, and the mosquitoes were just flying out of there like crazy. And I could see them flying by with my mask on, I could, I could see them flying by. Didn't get bit, thank goodness, but they're out there, and we've got to do something to control it. When we start saying less, really what we're doing is less, is less than a lot of other methods that are stated in this Purdue University study that I set up there. So that's a decision you guys have to make, I guess, you know?
So you know, I'd like to say, another thing mosquitoes harm, we've lost cattle because of anemoplast. Was it a tick, was it a mosquito? I don't know. But we pay extra to give medicated mineral because these mosquitoes and these ticks are biting the livestock, and you know, you can kill them. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what it is, I know for sure that what they died of, did they get it from an adult mosquito, you know, you don't know. But if you didn't control the adult mosquito population in the city of prior, how many pets?
Heartworms that transited. Also recorded a... Am I pronouncing that right?
Sure.
A queen, is that horses?
Equine.
Equine, okay.
Equine.
Tulsa reported its first West Nile virus, found mosquitoes like yesterday, so...
Yeah, Tulsa fogs, in fact, I've seen, when they get real bad, I've seen the either Channel Two or Channel Six news show their fogging trucks, and they use the same type units that I do, in the daytime going along Bird Creek, in the daytime.
You know, there's two other things we can't control. One's railroad, for them to do their part to help drainage get out. And two, prior geographical location, we're in a valley, and we're surrounded by floodplain. So there ain't a whole lot we can do on that.
Well, I understand. I would just hate to be contacted, hey, Mike, you're fogging for us, and we've got a little six-year-old over on Whittaker Street that just died of West Nile virus. I don't know how I would respond. Should I have done more? Should I have gone out every night instead of maybe changing it to, let's go out once a month? Once a month, you might as well forget the whole program, that's not going to do anything. We go out once a week and cover the entire city of prior, and it takes a couple of nights because it can take up to eight to nine hours to cover the whole city. And that's driving at eight to ten miles an hour. That's the recommended speed for this ULV unit. And they don't make one where you can drive thirty miles an hour and it's got ninety-four horsepower and a V-eight on it, they don't make that. You drive ten miles an hour or less to be effective with it.
So some things that I've heard tonight, perhaps code enforcement can make some recommendations regarding standing water. The city certainly can make information available through their website, through the city Facebook page, the information that Nina has provided, the information that you provided. We can make that information available, and there's no reason why that we should not want to do that. Issuing the warnings during, at the particular time of year, encouraging citizens to dump the water out. This is the wet time of the year. We had rain this morning. So ask me, do you have water standing anywhere in your backyard right now?
Yeah, my dog's swimming.
Yeah. So we all, we all do. So after this discussion, are we going to go home and, when it's dark, and go into our backyards and try to find whatever water is standing there? I don't know if we're going to do that. You know, I take, I take measures on my own property. I also have a horse farm, I take measures on the horse farm. I don't like mosquitoes, the mosquito population at my horse farm, because they get West Nile as well. We do some vaccination things, but I think there are things that all of us can do, and I appreciate the discussion tonight from, from, from both of you. Both of you seem to be more educated about it, especially probably Mike, you seem to be more educated about it, because that is your business that you do every day. about it because that is your business that you do every day.
Correct.
And disseminating that information to us is valuable. I believe it's valuable. So I think there's some things that we can, that we can do to create awareness. And for one, I appreciate the service that you provide. I don't call it safe anymore. I call it stable. And so there are some, there are some places in town that might be more sensitive than others. There's a place on the north end of town that we just identified as a, as a wildscape area that is, is off of, off of Clayton Road. As Elliott, Elliott intersects Clayton Road and then goes, Clayton Road goes then east, right around in that area.
Right.
And you're, you're aware of that. So there may, there may be other places in town that are sensitive. I'm not sure. But the awareness of it and pointing, pointing our direction toward it, especially this time of the year, I think is important. And so I appreciate your contribution and appreciate the discussion. And this is, this is a good place to do that. And we can, we can post, we can post as part of, of the discussion on our, on our website to be able to make it available to others if they want to listen.
Very good. I thank you for the opportunity.
Y'all have any questions for Mike or any questions?
Sorry, yeah.
Y'all have any questions for Mike or any, or any questions for Nina?
Throw something at, at me, anything. Voice for sub or anything. Gotcha. Gotcha.
You got it. Thank you very much for your time, Mike. Excuse me. All right, we'll move on. There is no city attorney's report, so we'll move on to item number six, discussion of possible action on consent agenda. A, approval minutes, May 3, 2022 council meeting. B, approved payroll purchase orders through May 27, 2022. C, approved claims for purchase orders through May 17, 2022. D, acknowledged receipt of deficient purchase orders. E, approved January 2022 appropriation requests. F, approved February 2022 appropriation requests. G, discussion, excuse me. G, discussion possible action regarding removal of, approval of a quotation from Bolt in the amount of $3,375 for running phone, phone drops and library expansion, as is in the best interest of the city due to logistics considerations and expanding the service from library repair and maintenance account 022215091. H, discussion possible action regarding approval 2022, 2023 Citigroup Health Insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Item I, discussion possible action regarding removal Citigroup, renewal of Citigroup Life and Dental Assurance Insurance. Item J, discussion possible action regarding continued offering of optional vision insurance. Item K, discussion possible action regarding continued offer, continued offering of optional voluntary life, short-term disability and long-term disability. Item L, discussion possible action regarding approval hotel motel tax grant application for Lake Area Softball Association in the amount of $7,500 for repair concession building. Item M, discussion possible action regarding closure of South Eight Air from Graham to Southeast First Street on May 26, 2022, from 3:30 to 9:00, 9 o'clock PM for Main Street event. Item N, discussion possible action regarding expenditure in the amount of $10,440 to Upstate Cloud for the G Suite base, basic annual license subscription from May 20, May 12, 2022, to May 11, 2023, from general software account 022015260. Item O, discussion possible action to adopt and approve the master plan as presented by Chris Duncan with Mechek and Associates at the June 2, 2020 council meeting. This action is required for the State of Oklahoma Department of Energy Management and Homeland Security to close out the file. Item P, discussion possible action regarding appointment Jerry Cantrell as a Pryor Creek Police Department Reserve Officer. Cantrell is Cleat certified and is a former Pryor Creek Police Officer. These are the items of the consent agenda. Are there items that council would like to remove?
N.
Item N. I'd like to remove item H, I, J, and K. Are there other items? Then I'd accept a motion then to approve all those items that were not lifted. Motion Ketcher, second, Smith. Call for vote?
Breakfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item H, discussion possible action regarding approval 2022, 2023 Citigroup Health Insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have our wonderful agent, please come to the microphone, Jennifer. And council, this information has gone to ordinance insurance committee and it comes to council per ordinance insurance. It is this item that you have on your desk.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's, let's get a motion first, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion and Ketcher, second, Nance.
Great. Well, thanks again for having me and for giving me a few minutes. I know we're turning into a marathon meeting, so I'll try to be brief. But I feel like it's my duty, since I only usually get to see you once a year, to give you a little bit of a background and a rundown of what's going on and the status of not only the city, but of what's going on in the marketplace as well. So we're in our fifth year working with the city on the benefit plan. So we've been able to make some good strides towards various things. This year, we added a monthly employee communication that educates employees on how to use their benefits and save money. We've had a wellness newsletter also that goes out monthly that can be shared with employees. And last year, for the first time, we got to implement online enrollment. So employees have a vehicle where they can make their elections and check their benefits on their phone or any kind of device that has internet, internet access. That provides Lisa Malone a really good tool to administer the plan more efficiently and with fewer errors between our office and, and the insurance companies because there's less, you know, handwritten information and less data entry. So I have to give her big props. I don't know how much she worked with Lisa, but we work with her on a pretty regular basis. She does an excellent job. I have about 75 different clients across the state and across the country, and not everyone is performing as well in their role as Lisa does. She really is a gold star performer, and I hope y'all know that. So I wanted to give her a little shout out. Just a little bit of background for the new counselors also about Brown and Brown. Like I said, we've been working with the city now for five years. I think we're kind of a diamond here in, in the city of Pryor when it comes to businesses and opportunities. You may not know, but we're the fifth largest insurance brokerage that does what we do in the entire country. We've got about 13,000 employees in the U.S. and in other countries. So what does that mean for you? Thankfully, you still have local service. You have me. I live here. I've been here for 22 years now in the community and very active and involved as much as I can be. So you still get the local service and the handholding and the care and the passion towards helping the city's employees. But it gives me, as your agent, a lot of resources and tools that I wouldn't have access to otherwise. So I feel like it helps me do a lot better job. And I take my job very seriously because I know it's twofold. First of all, it's a big budget expense for the city, probably one of the biggest. So that of course makes it important. But also, we're trying to protect employees and their families' financial security by giving them access to benefits that are affordable, access to the care that they need in a, you know, local providers and, and good quality service. So all of that in a nutshell. Hopefully, we're performing to that level. You know, insurance is not the most favorite thing everybody likes to talk about, but I love it. I'm very passionate about it. Been doing this for 22 years too, as long as I've been in Pryor, been doing, been in this industry. So it's important to me, kind of like the last week, where, you know, we have our thing and hopefully, hopefully we're helping the city out. Something new coming this year, we have a marketing team that's put together a new, little bit shinier employee benefits guide, a benefit, our guide that employees can take home and look at with their family that explains their benefits, hopefully highlights all the things that they need to know and helps it be more understandable for them so they can get the value out of their plan that they're paying for. So moving on to this year, we did start the marketing. We sent the RFP, what we call an RFP, out to all of the carriers back in February to get a head start. I've been watching the claims and sending updates to the mayor and Lisa on a regular basis. I pull that monthly just to kind of see if there's anything red flag, if we need to jump in mid-year and say, hey, we need to have a meeting and discuss this. Things are getting out of control. So I keep an eye on that monthly. We went ahead and sent the submission out to all the carriers back in February to give us plenty of time. We got the renewal from Blue Cross Blue Shield on April 29, and it came at a 14% increase over month-to-month premium over what the current plan year has been. So if you want to flip into your packet there, just kind of make a couple of quick notes. You'll see the second page is a list of all of the insurance companies that we sent the city's information out to, including new this year, we did approach the Oklahoma Municipal League regarding their self-funded health plan. All of the other health insurance companies, including the municipal league, declined because they said they couldn't compete with the rates that Blue Cross is offering in the renewal. So they could have given us a quote, but it would have been kind of worthless paper at that point because their rates would be so much higher. So Blue Cross stayed at the 14% renewal increase. We tried. I did everything I could, begged and pleaded and all those things to get a break on that, even if it was a few percentage points. Usually, there's a little bit of cushion built in there, but apparently not this year. They did not budge. And then you can see the rest of the carriers we went to on the other lines that are in future bullet points on your agenda. On the third page, just a quick overview of the renewal history for the last five years, how we've moved from United to Community Care back to United. And then then with Blue Cross, this will be the third year now. If you average up all of the renewals since 2018, we're at about a 4% average year over year. And that's below trend with most employers. So all in all, I think even though this year is a significant increase, I think all in all, the track record is running pretty well compared to most employers that we work with every day. And you can see where we've in the past been able to negotiate down from the initial renewal in that kind of second section over to the final renewal. Like last year, for example, it started at 21%. We added a new plan that actually had a richer benefit and we're able to get the overall increase down to eight. So it's a game, right? I mean, I understand that. Everybody gets frustrated with it, but I have a lot of experience trying to work with that and do the best we can to get the best price at the best benefits. The population has grown too, quite significantly in the last five years, which I'm sure you guys are all aware of. So that also constitutes for some of the, the price increases. So moving on to Blue Cross Blue Shield's renewal, on the fourth page of your packet, I have in the center there, there are two columns that say current at the top. That's the benefit, the two benefits that are offered now to the city employees. They have a choice of either one. And then to the right, there are three columns that say renewal option. So what was discussed at the committee meeting was keeping the two plans that are in place now. So if people want those, they can still purchase them, but adding a less expensive plan with a little bit higher deductible that would give employees a choice of having a plan that basically costs the same as it does now for the employee only, the, the single, I'm sorry, the spouse and the child tiers. The family tier is still going up. So it was the worst, the best of the worst, right? So we've got $1,000 deductible on that plan, $3,000 out-of-pocket, which means in a worst-case scenario with claims, a horrible cancer, a bad car accident, an individual covered wouldn't have more than $3,000 out of their own pocket for their claims. After that, Blue Cross pays 100% for the year. So this is still really good financial protection in the grand scheme of things. The average deductible in Oklahoma is $2,500 to $3,000. And that's your out-of-pocket on your least expensive plan. So still a really, really rich benefit for all of the employees.
So Jennifer and, and the ordinance insurance committees, jump in if, if you want to. So the claims history that we had indicated that perhaps this item with the higher deductible would be, would be a benefit, just by virtue of the fact of looking at that history of claims.
Yes. I think there were 74 members that were below $500 or something like that. Very few employees are going to get near that $1,000 deductible.
Right, right. So it, it just made sense to offer that. And, and if we can't offer that, we can save, we can save some money, then, then we should try to do it. So.
And to be honest, when we're meeting with employees and educating them, I'm going to really urge them to look at the network providers that are in that most expensive plan. That's the preferred network. There really isn't reason to keep that plan unless there's just some rare case where there's a specialist that isn't in the new advantage network. It's about a 98% match across the state between the two. And that's why Blue Cross is pricing that preferred plan higher. They're wanting to get people to the advantage. That's where they have the deepest discounts, the lowest reimbursement rate with providers. So they save money, you save money, members save money. So that's why the preferred plan, we're seeing it get more and more and more expensive. So that's, homework will help each individual do. We'll look up their doctors after the enrollment meeting and help them determine, do they really need to pay more to keep that? Or are they essentially wasting money? Because the benefit on the middle plan is actually richer anyway. You'll have less out-of-pocket in claims. So that's, that was the recommendation, is adding that as the base plan. And then the option of employees, we're not taking anything away, but they can pay more to keep those other plans if they want to.
Right. So any questions, comments about, about, about the motion? Okay, we can go ahead and deal with that and then go on with the next, the next item, the life after, after we vote on this. Call for vote?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nancy? Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item I, discussion possible action regarding renewal of Citigroup Life and Dental Insurance. Motion, second. Motion, Shropshire, second, Gontier.
All right, these are much simpler. The next page is the, what we call basic life and AD&amp;D or accidental death and dismemberment coverage. All full-time employees at the city have a $15,000 benefit, paid 100% by the city, relatively inexpensive. It's $179 a month to provide that benefit, but very valuable to employees and their families. There's no change on this. It's actually in rate, a two-year rate guarantee. We're in the middle of that. So until 2023, Mutual of Omaha can adjust your rate. They've been great. We haven't had a claim recently, but the claims we have had have been paid timely and I think efficiently. Life insurance is pretty cut and dry. And then on the dental, if you want to flip over to the next page, the reason these two are lumped together, by the way, if it doesn't make sense, is that because of the city's contribution to them, they, the city is paying part of this premium. So on the dental plan, it's with Delta Dental of Oklahoma. It's been there for a long time. Everyone loves Delta Dental members and dentists. If we keep the plan exactly the same, there are no changes to the benefit and the cost would stay the same. However, what was discussed at the committee meeting was increasing the benefit from a $1,500 maximum payout for claims, basically for the year, to a $2,500 payout. So we're bumping up members' benefit they can receive by $1,000, but the increase to the premium really is less than a dollar per employee. I mean, that's a really big win for everybody at low cost. So those are the two things. The basic life, no changes. And then the dental, the committee's recommendations, my understanding is to move towards the $2,500 benefit at the little higher cost.
That's correct. Any discussion? There's a motion and a second. No discussion. Call for vote?
Seaver?
Yes.
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nancy? Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Gontier?
Yes.
And motion carries. Item J, discussion possible action regarding continued offering the optional vision insurance.
Motion, second.
Motion, Chipwood, second, Nance.
All right, two down, two to go. So the vision, same thing. BSP is the carrier. No changes in benefit or cost. This is employee-paid and it's optional for employees if they want to do it or not. Have great participation, but really no, no challenges that we've heard from anybody about the benefit itself.
Okay. Any discussion? Good job, committee. Good job, Jennifer. Call for vote?
Ketcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Gontier?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item K, discussion possible action regarding continuing offering That's what I thought I heard.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I thought it was down there too, so.
Motion is second.
All right. So the next three benefits again are all paid for by employees. They're voluntary is what we call them. The first one is life insurance. These also are also with Mutual of Omaha, excuse me. And that's a good thing, you want your life insurance and your disability with the same insurance company for lots of reasons. But there's no change in the benefits or their rates for any of these, these coverages because again, they're in the two-year rate guarantee. I will just say though, for the record, that for example, the voluntary life, as you'll see the rate grids there, it's based on the employee's age bracket, same with the voluntary long-term disability. So if someone had a birthday last year that moved them from one age bracket to the next, which happens every five years, they are probably going to see an increase on their premium this year to keep the same benefit they have. They can always drop it if they want to, especially on the life insurance. They can reduce it to make it more affordable, but there could be some employees that see a little bit of an increase there. They can cover their spouses and their children on the life insurance here as well as an option. There's voluntary life insurance, there's short-term disability, and then there's long-term disability that would basically replace up to 60% of the employee's income until they're still security age if they have both short and long-term disability. Questions?
Questions, discussion? Hearing none, call for vote?
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nan?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Catcher?
Yes.
You don't have anything from Purdue or any kind of studies that's been around?
I'm a nerd when it comes to this stuff, you don't want to get me started. But thank you again, I appreciate it very much. And you guys are free to call me if you do have questions or just want to know more about what's going on in the market and why things are the way they are. I can talk about it all night. So anyway, thanks, have a good evening.
Thanks so much, Jennifer. All right, we'll move on to item, item N, discussion of possible action regarding expenditure in the amount of $10,440 to Upcur Cloud for the G Suite base annual license subscription from May 12, 2022, to May 11, 2023, from general software account 022015260.
Motion?
Motion, Breakfield, second, Smith. Discussion.
I'm just trying to understand a little bit what it is. It's, I'm just not familiar with it.
This is an annual license. It is a subscription that we use, basically, it's a software program that we use. Do you know a little bit more to answer that question, Eva?
So do we have access to the cloud?
It says email.
Can I help you?
You probably would be the one to help us.
The library is not part.
She is very helpful.
The library is not part of this group, but we have the same, the same, basically the same suite. It is email, it's the email server, it's also Google Drive and all of the, the whole suite of services that Google provides. And it does it, the, the cost is because you get a bigger package and also you get, they get the pryor creek.org at the end of their email address. So at the library, we're pryorlibrary.org as opposed to gmail.com. So that's a little bit of a cost. So this is just that cost.
Okay. And it is an annual subscription?
Yes.
So it's kind of like on our home computer, we have like a OneDrive and all that stuff. This is like for?
Yeah, so OneDrive would be, I think OneDrive is a Microsoft product.
Right.
But this is, Google has, Google Drive, so it has the, kind of an equivalent to the Microsoft package of Word, Excel.
But, but expanded for this big network.
Right, and it's all on the cloud, so there's not any servers that we have to maintain here. It's very efficient and handy.
I just was curious.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Appreciate you for bailing us all out.
Eva, did you write all that down?
Can you come up and say that again?
Yeah, sure.
What are your thoughts on mosquitoes?
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Call for vote?
Nan?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Catcher?
Yep.
Yes.
Motion carries, item seven, committee reports, budget personnel, Breakfield.
We don't have any reports to make, but our next budget meeting is June 14, 5:30, and we're going to be going over the budget for next year.
So that will, that will be a long meeting.
It will be a very long meeting.
Very long meeting. Something that, that I'll be doing is explaining more of that to you ahead of time rather than just at that meeting. So stay tuned for that. All of that work is just about completed.
Look forward to it.
Look forward to it, yes, ma'am. B, ordinance insurance, Shropshire. We're working on a couple of issues right now. As soon as we can find a date that everybody can show up on, we'll, we'll have. Very good. Straight to me, Mr. Smith.
Next week, we'll be discussing citywide mowing.
Very good, very good. Item eight, unperceivable, know of none.
Motion.
Second.
Catcher makes a motion to adjourn and Gantier seconds. Call for vote?
Yes.
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Catcher?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nan?
Yes.
We're called to order Pryor Public Works Authority, item two, approval minutes, May 3, 2022 meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Breakfield, second, Smith. Discussion. Call for vote?
Chipwood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nan?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.